I call this meeting, January ninth, Friendswood City Council, regular meeting in order. If you have a forum, please stand for the invitation to be given by Pastor Bobby Kirkpatrick from Friendswood Friends Church.
And then remain standing, please. We'll say the pledges after Pastor preaches.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you this evening, prepared to make decisions and ask that you who are full of wisdom, give that wisdom to us, to our council members, to our community, as we make decisions that are best for the most and best for our city. Help us to have wisdom, and Lord, we trust you for that. Give us what we need for each day, both today and in the future, and help us to provide that for others. And Lord, as the God of peace and the great healer, we pray that any divisions among us, that you would heal those and help us to be agents of your peace in our world. Thank you for the opportunities that we have in this city, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thanks, Bobby. All right. Item four, council comments and reports. Anybody want to take up any time on this football evening to give a report?
Negative.
John Scott?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocky?
And John, just watch it on your phone. I just wanted to mention that the library hosted their annual ZakiCon event this past Friday. They had 980 kids, along with families, attend the event. And they also will be having a open-mic night this Thursday, and you can sign up for a 15-minute slot.
I'll be very brave.
Councilmember Branson, take all the time you need.
I almost wore purple tonight. I just wanted to mention that we'd had a situation at the activity building where there maybe had been some break-ins and what have you, and so there was requests for additional lighting. And then also, we took it a step further, and there'll be some security cameras being installed. So I wanted to let folks know, especially our seniors who utilize that facility frequently, that we are taking measures to try to help rectify that situation. So thank you, Marad. I appreciate that very much. That's it, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on. Public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with rules of decorum. I have three cards here. Vanessa Cordell.
I'm ready. I'm starting this off. Okay.
You're first. Your card was right on top here.
Well, is this about, am I supposed, I'm sorry, I must have, can I talk about Agenda Eight? Is this where my time is to do that?
You can talk about anything you want during public comment.
Okay. Well, I'm here from Hunter's Creek. I live on Hunter's Lane, and we're here to oppose the zone change that Masasushi's proposing for the green space. It separates that business from our neighborhood. One of the major things that we're concerned about is the fact that our homeowners association owns the retention pond and pays for all of the upkeep, for all of the flooding that happens there, making sure that the retention pond is cleared, all of the things are done. That's all on our homeowners' pocketbooks. The businesses that are around it pay nothing for that. Now, we're adding another business and more concrete. And all you have to do is look at the building beside Jack in the Box, or right there behind Starbucks, which I visited yesterday, and the whole parking lot is flooded. We are not doing a good job of keeping up with the amount of concrete compared to grass, and now you're proposing to do that more, which will directly affect my neighborhood and my neighbors. So I'm opposed to it, and I want to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Dulcifino.
Evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Wayne Dulcifino. I run an investigative media firm in Houston, and you may or may not know, but we've been working on an investigation into possible targeting of drivers leaving a particular establishment here called Friends Pub. That's not why I'm here. What I'm here is to, is to ask you guys to assist me. We've already been involved with one legal battle with the city over open records, over the body cameras, which I believe are fundamentally public and should always be disclosed. Regardless of who won that battle, it ended up costing your taxpayers money. I'm trying to avoid another one, but I have, I've come tonight for a couple of reasons. One is I'm getting letters from multiple lawyers, multiple letters from different lawyers at the same law firm, Lewis and Briscoe, with different dates on them, asking me for the exact same thing. Now, that's a waste of your money, okay? It's a waste of my time, but it's a waste of your money. But more importantly than that, everything I'm asking for, they are sending to the Attorney General. And normally, you know, that's part of the game government plays to try to stall the release of public records. We all get that. But some of the things I've asked for are things that just sort of a logical person would never think is not a public record. I asked, for instance, what the statistics were for DWI arrests. I didn't ask for the names of the people arrested, or the names of the officers. I simply said, how many DWI arrests do you make in given months? That, according to your lawyers, is confidential, okay? I know of no other city in America where that's confidential. And, and look, I understand that you're not aware, Mayor and Council, of every little thing your lawyers do, but I'm telling you, because I'm used to dealing with lawyers for government, that, no offense to these guys, but no one seems to know what they're doing, and they're wasting your money. I think you're a city, a good city, a city with great childhood memories at Camp Madison here, a good city, but you need to change the way you view these public records requests. Because at the end of the day, you don't want to make these investigations about what you're hiding, right? Let the sun shine in. And so I've asked you today to try to get your lawyers off me, because I have a history of sort of fighting back when lawyers mess with me, and I would hate to waste any more of your taxpayers' money in another legal fight over public records. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Judy Wiggins.
Good evening. My name is Judy Wiggins, and I am here on behalf of the Friendswood Rotary Club. One of the things we love about our community is that local organizations work together for the betterment of our community, and that is what brings us here this evening. The Friendswood Rotary Club and the Friendswood ISD Education Foundation partnered together for their first-ever 12-by-12 art fundraiser. The mission of the Friendswood Rotary 12-by-12 Art Project is to feature the gifts of the artists of today while investing in the artists of tomorrow in our community. This fundraiser would not have been as successful without the help and support of Matt Riley and the Friendswood Public Library. They graciously allowed us to use their space to display the art and as a pickup location after the auction was complete. They also allowed various groups to host their meetings there to give the art more visibility, including an education foundation board meeting and a rotary meeting. With their support, we raised $4,680, funding 13 fine art grants in FISD. That number would have been less if it weren't for the public library's support and having a central location to go view the art. The library has a history of being a wonderful community partner to work with, and on behalf of Rotary, the Education Foundation, and the community, we wanted to publicly thank them for their participation in the 12-by-12 art fundraiser and their ongoing support. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Okay, item six, committees or special reports. Receive and discuss the annual report from the Friendswood Historical Society presented by former Mayor Dave Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and city staff. It's good to see you. So it is a tradition for us to provide you with a report on our goings-on during the year, and that's what I wanted to do this evening, starting with thanking you for the continued support that the city provides to the Friendswood Historical Society. This past year has been a reopening for us. Most importantly, as we have come out of the COVID era, if you can call it that, we were able to plan and reopen our museums again. So we have the Brown Museum, and we have the Perry House. Both of those facilities allow the public to come and view the history of Friendswood. Thanks to some of our committee members' work, Sally included, we were able to find over 25 new volunteers in the community who have been trained and will provide docent to the museums. A docent is a host, someone who's availed themselves of at least some of the knowledge of our history and understands the importance of bringing people through the facilities with a minimal amount of damage and the most amount of education possible. So that endeavor, because we lost numerous docents during the two years that we were closed, was very important to be able to open the museums back up again. So the museums are open in conjunction with the Friendswood High School Museum. The first Saturday of every month, the museum is open, and so we welcome the public during those days. The museums are also available for the public for private tours, but those are by appointment only, is the best way to put that. In addition into opening the museums, we also held with some of our longstanding traditions, including our ice cream social, which was held at the steps of the Friends Church this year. Many hundreds of people have come to enjoy that social activity and the opportunity to, to share in and be part of the Friendswood heritage. We also did our annual HistoWeen at, at Histo, at the end of October. This year was particularly special, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge that we started, I hope, to be a new tradition, in that one of your fellow council members is now an author. And he authored a one-act play, which was the true-to-life history of Frank Brown, our city's founder, as a buffalo hunter. So he had quite the colorful past before he came to Friendswood, and now we have historical reference documentation of that, that Steve Rocky wrote for us, that we'll be able to hand down that history to generations in the future. This year, we performed it for the very first time during the HistoWeen celebration, right there at the steps of the Perry House, just off the Friends Cemetery. So, way to go, Steve. That was awesome. This year, we had something new that I also hope will be continued forward in the future, in that the Heritage Gardeners asked us if we would open the museums and make them part of the Christmas House tour. So for the first time, our museums were open to the public. They were decorated, traditionally, I might add, for the public to be able to come through and see the museums as they toured some of the beautiful homes that had been decorated for Christmas in Friendswood. And I hope that they'll ask us back year after year, because it was a great opportunity for the public to be able to come through. Let me see if I'm missing anything else. The Christmas tree lighting also continued as a tradition. It's one of the early activities in the first part of December that kicks off the holiday season for us. This year, the Friends Church kids came over and helped us with carols. We lit the Christmas tree. Santa Claus was there, was there to provide the magic for, for that evening as well. One of the things that's not in my written report that I didn't want to mention to you that was important to us this past year was the passing, passing of Joyceina Baker. So she has been our Friendswood historian. She meant a lot to us, and we recognize the importance of the society continuing Joyceina's work in the community for years to come and for generations to come, and we certainly want to acknowledge her of the wealth of heritage that she provided to the society and to our community. Lastly, you guys received a copy of our budget for this upcoming year, and I did want to mention to you, in addition to thanking you for the contribution that the city makes, that you'll notice that our insurance costs on our facilities have gone up significantly. Just about three or four years ago, we were only paying about $3,000 a year for our insurance. Now, we're paying seven. That money would have normally gone towards the upkeep and maintenance of those two museums. So it's really eating into our budget to be able to continue to keep those facilities up. A lot of the work that's been done over the last couple of years has been done voluntarily and at the hands of folks who have donated things or provided free construction work, I guess is the best way to put it. So if, if there's an opportunity to examine how the city can help us and to increase anything, that would be welcomed, because that's really where that money's going to go. The organization is all volunteer. We have no paid staff, and it's just all done on the backs of Friendswood citizens, for the most part. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight.
Thanks, Mayor.
Talk to you.
Appreciate you. All right, moving on. Public hearings today are being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding the subjects of each public hearing. Everyone desiring to be part of today's hearing should have signed the appropriate list in the foyer, which will be provided, which will provide the speaking order for the hearings. Each participant shall give his/her name and address in order to provide a proper record of the hearings. The rules allow each person five minutes to present information. The time clock will flash a yellow light when there are 30 seconds remaining on the allotted time and flash a red light and a beeping sound when the time is expired. If you have any questions, please direct them to me. Item 7A, proposed future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment concerning 4.621 acres located on West Edgewood Drive, FM 2351. I now call to order two public hearings regarding a tract of land located along West Edgewood Drive, FM 2351, being a 4.621-acre tract of land out of Lot 2 in Block 1 of Friendswood, a subdivision out of the Sarah McKissick survey, abstract 151 in Galfson County, Texas. The first public hearing concerns an amendment to the Friendswood Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map to change the FLUM designation from retail to low-density residential. The second public hearing concerns a request for a zone classification change from planned unit development 2017-12 zoning district to a single-family residential dwelling district, SFR. I'd now like to request that staff summarize the subjects both, for both of these public hearings. Aubrey, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a zone change request before you. For the current zoning of this property is a planned unit development that was approved in 2017 that would have allowed independent living, assisted living, and memory care units. That development did not go through, so that's the zoning that currently sits on the property until it's changed. So this applicant is proposing to develop the tract with single fam, with a single-family subdivision that would consist of approximately nine to 12 lots, that would be, meet our minimum lot size for SFR at 90 feet, 90 feet width. The property is currently surrounded by mostly residential properties, is situated along 2351 with one commercial neighbor and several nearby commercial properties. The property has been rezoned six times since 1970 and still sits vacant, so it's a little bit of a challenging tract. The future land use map, we did decide to leave it as retail on the future land use map, just, you know, hoping to support the idea of, you know, needing more commercial acreage. But with so many residential properties surrounding, and the applicant bringing this project forward, the commission was favorable to amend the land use map and let this go forward. So the commission held their public hearing on December 8th and voted seven to zero unanimously in favor of the requested zone change.
Thank you. There being no one desiring to speak, I now close these two public hearings and move on to item 7B. Consider an ordinance amending the Friendswood Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map to change the FLUM designation from retail to low-density residential, and amending the official zoning map to make a zone classification change from planned unit development 2017-12 zoning district to a single-family residential SFR for a tract located on West Edgewood Drive, FM 2351, being a 4.621-acre tract of land out of Lot 2 in Block 1 of Friendswood, a subdivision out of the Sarah McKissick survey, abstract 151 in Friendswood, Galfson County, Texas.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
And a second. A discussion. All in favor. Opposed. I see six to one. Motion passes. Right. Item 8A, proposed FLUM amendment and zoning map amendment concerning property located at 110 Hunter's Lane. I now call to order two public hearings regarding property located at 110 Hunter's Lane, Friendswood, Galfson County, Texas. First public hearing concerns an amendment to the Friendswood Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map to change the FLUM designation from retail to high-density residential. And the second public hearing concerns a request for the zone classification change from a community shopping center zoning district, CSC, to a multifamily residential, medium-density district, MFR-M. I'd now like to request staff to summarize the subjects of these public hearings. Aubrey, over to you again.
Yes, sir. So this is property located along Hunter's Lane, behind the existing Masasushi, in front of the Hunter's Creek subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on December 8th, and many residents of Hunter's Creek Estates attended the meeting and expressed opposition to the development, citing issues such as drainage, traffic, invasion of privacy, proximity of the Hunter's Creek Estates gate and the proposed gate, density, safety, and one-way in and out of Hunter's Creek Estates. Currently, the property is zoned CSC and would allow for commercial development, which would likely have similar impacts. The commissioners determined that the MFRM zoning would provide the residents a better buffer between their homes and the current restaurant and shopping center. Traffic, gate locations, site plan, and drainage plans will be addressed during the site plan review process. Let's see. So six to eight townhomes would be expected to have less impact to the Hunter's Creek residents than the potential uses under the existing commercial zoning. And so the commission voted at that meeting. We had one commissioner recuse himself, and Commissioner Hinckley opposed, so the vote was five to one for this request.
What was the one recusing himself?
A conflict of interest.
Wow.
He is involved in the project, but not enough to, it was just a personal interest conflict.
Aubrey, you mentioned this is for medium density. What is low density? Multifamily residential, low density? How many units would there be if it was a low-density?
Low would, six units per acre.
Six units. And he's asking for medium density?
Yes.
So price per unit?
I do not have that information. The applicant is here, and they might have that information for you.
We're in the public hearing, partners. Just asking questions.
Does the applicant have any comments? They'd like to provide at this time. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Ah.
Mayor and Council, my name is Michael Joe. I'm an owner of Masasushi, and we developed this land, 2.7 acre, 2012. The restaurant opened 2015, and the main thing is, we have so many chances to put a commercial building in the back, but we don't want to disturb the neighborhood. If commercial building is going to be more noisy and dumpster smell. For the restaurant, we even hiring the guy clean every day the parking lot. We even power wash the dumpster. We just don't want the neighborhood mad at us. And we, we have so many opportunities to build a commercial building, but we thinking about the friendship. We don't want the people mad to us. We do the business. So if we can change to the residential, we build a townhome, it's going to be more quiet, less noisy, less traffic, and it's not going to affect the neighborhood house value.
How many townhomes in your plan? How many units?
Six units.
Six units? Did you have a question? Mayor Pro Tem, Aaron Work?
So you mentioned about not affecting the houses with the dumpster smell and things like that. Would that not affect the new houses going in there, too?
The, if we put a commercial building in the backside, it's going to be very close by the neighborhood.
But the new house, you said you didn't want to affect the old houses with the dumpster smell and different things. So wouldn't the new townhomes you're talking about, wouldn't they be close to this, too?
The new townhome not going to have a commercial dumpster.
Okay, and they won't be close to your existing, all the existing dumpsters now and behind all the development there?
We can use the right now existing dumpster.
And then what's the average price per unit?
We not going to sell it. We just lease it, just rent it.
And the, and you, is it going to be higher-end housing, you think?
Yes, it's going to be, every unit, around 2,200 square feet.
Okay.
What's the average lease in Friendswood for a unit that size?
$2,500 a month.
$2,500 a month, okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a list here. Emily Rives.
I'm just here to support the zoning change for Masasushi.
Could you step up, Emily, quickly? Just, you, you don't have to say anything more than you just said, but for the record, would you mind saying it into our microphone?
Yeah, I'm just here to support the zoning change for Masasushi.
Thank you. Ricardo San, Ricardo, sorry. I'm going to butcher your last name if I try to pronounce it. Emma Terrio?
That's good, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. I'm here to support the change, the zoning change for.
Okay, well, thank you. Sue Rives.
Do you think I should vote?
Yeah, say, tell, yeah, I have their addresses, sorry. 2886 Bridle Path?
Yes.
Lane, okay.
I'm just here to support Michael and the zoning change for the condos.
Thank you. Megan, Megan, I can't quite read your handwriting.
Terminella, Megan Terminella.
Terminella.
Yeah, I live in the house just adjoining to the property we're talking about, 1705 Hunter's Cove. Unlike the other people that came forward, this directly impacts me, and I'm directly opposed to it. I bought the house and built it 12 years ago, knowing it was owned commercial. I would like it to stay commercial. There's business hours with commercial. Regardless, it was owned that way, and we built that way, knowing it was that. So I ask you to please vote now. Thanks.
Thank you. Gerardo, sorry.
Gerardo, Jerry.
Jerry, Corona?
Yes, I'm an owner on, in the Hunter subdivision. I'm at 217 Hunter's Lane. I'm here to oppose the zoning change. You know, when we came to the first meeting before the zoning board, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, why it was good for us to change it from commercial to residential. Honestly, the cases, the, the points made did not, you know, satisfy my, 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 my needs in the sense that they indicated that, you know, if you keep it commercial, you can have a McDonald's, a two-parlor, et cetera, in, in, instead of a residential property, which would be favorable for your tax, you know, tax property. I totally disagree with that. Want to keep it commercial, we'll take, you know, a little bit of a risk as far as what, how that develops. The problem with there being changed to residential is, you know, it's going to be rental properties, rental condos. You're going to have people coming and going. Annual, multi-annual leases are going to be written. That's a big issue. I definitely see that as a big impact on property values. And then there's a lot of issues around the gating, the traffic, the drainage. And we need to make the, the businesses in the area accountable for using a retention pond. When the retention pond went into service, it was sized for, you know, 15 years ago, when we had a lot less population in Pearland and Friendswood. Right now, we're getting a lot of, a lot of flooding, even with, you know, five inches of rain, six inches of rain. So I ask you to really reconsider the, the, the voices of our citizens living in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Dan Rammer and Sharon, how'd I do on that one?
Everybody awake?
Everybody awake?
We all dove for the floor.
Hi, my name is Dan Rammer. I am a resident of Hunter's Estates, and I'm a new, a new movie to this area, actually from another state. And I was quite concerned when I saw the notice about the change, because like many people here, we bought our properties there with our eyes wide open as far as what the zoning was and what it meant to our families that live in that area. I'm 100% in agreement that someone should, is able, should be able to request a zoning change, but that request- request should only be granted if there's no opposition to the people that are affected by it. And those are the people that are going to be affected by it are the homeowners of Hunter's Creek Estates. And the owner of the property in question went into this with eyes wide open too. He knew exactly what he was buying. It was shopping center zoning. Now, I don't know about that statement about whether he's trying to be a good neighbor or not, but he bought that property under the terms of community shopping center. And so he's wanting to change that, he has every right to do that. However, when that takes place, as you know, we send out an announcement to all the people that are affected by it, and those are the residents in proximity to the project. And that's what was done in this case, and we had a meeting before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we all came to that meeting, we expressed our concerns. Planning and Zoning Commission didn't listen to our concerns. I believe they already had their minds made up. I'm not sure why, but it might be something you want to look into. Again, this doesn't impact the members of the zoning and planning commission, it impacts the residents in that area. Now, let's remember our, what we're all here for. We're here for the public interest, correct? So we want things that are good for the citizenry of Friendswood. And this project doesn't concern a citizen of Friendswood, it's an outside corporation from Houston that's going to benefit from this, and it's going to benefit to the detriment of the citizens of Hunter Estates, citizens of Friendswood, Texas. So for this reason, I oppose this zoning. All these other reasons you've heard about drainage, gate procedures, traffic, unsafe conditions there, property values going down, those are all true, that will be, that will have an impact on the residents there. But mostly, it's about benefiting the public interest. The public interest is the citizenry of Friendswood. Those are the people that live in that area, not an outside Houston corporation. So for that reason, I strongly recommend you deny this zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes.
Michelle Apple. Sorry, I was just thanking you.
My apologies, I actually thought you just had to sign in to attend the meeting, so I don't have anything to say for the point, sorry.
Don Scott.
I wrote mine down so I'd stay on point. So the homeowners in Hunter's Creek bought their homes in the subdivision, knowing that the property outside the gate was going to be zoned as commercial. The land was bought by the present owner, knowing that it was going to be zoned as The land was bought by the present owner, okay, so which was probably approved by the zoning committee, possibly also city council members. Now the owner has the audacity to want to come in and change it to rental apartments, let's call it what it's going to be. I will bring up one of the issues that was brought up a moment ago about the gate that's going to be placed about 20 feet, 20 to 25 feet where the present gate that gets into our community is located right now. So you have cars, there are times when the gates open for buses and things to come through, and the other gate opposite is closed. A lot of the cars have a tendency to come out that open gate, and they're going to have a gate now that comes out and releases into that street. Potential issue there. Let's see. As we all know too, rental property creates transient people and not families. And like he mentioned, the owner of that property mentioned that that's going to be rental property, rental apartments basically, and not family. You buy it, you stay there, you own the property. Also, another statement that he mentioned that I don't think is true, he claims that he's going to build a road behind those, if it had been commercial, for the garbage people to come in in the back and deliveries. That's not true, because there's not enough room. And if he did that also, where's he going to put the road? Either on the side where you go into the shopping center to go to HEB, or the side where you come into the main street, which makes that a smaller shopping center. So I'd like to bring those issues up, that some of the things that he mentioned were not true. He's not a good neighbor. I live at the first house, and I can tell you, yeah, he cleans the street, but he cleans it up until 1 o'clock in the morning. That's a fact. So for the individuals that live in the first several houses there, we have issues that we discuss among ourselves, and now I'd like to bring that to the board also. So those are my concerns, and I have a question that I'd like to present to the committee. My question to the city council members, which one of you today would like to have rental property, apartments, 20 feet from your property? And if I could see a show of hands could approve that, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's fine. I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you, sir. There's another Kat. Is there a person named Kat? I think I got the first name.
And I signed in quickly, but actually I'll go about another issue later. This is only for this, right?
We do have another public hearing coming up after this one. Is that what you want to talk about?
Well, actually, about Exxon property, that is later.
That is later, yes, so.
That agenda item, that agenda item referencing Exxon property is not a public hearing, it's a workshop with city council.
Oh, that's a workshop, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
No, ma'am, sorry. Okay, then, that leaves Jonathan Hagan?
Holgan.
Holgan, sorry. Forgot my glasses.
Friends and neighbors, thank you, thank you for your service in the city council. I know some evenings like this may not feel as greatly appreciated as when you first signed up for it, but thank you, I appreciate your service. I want to say first off that unlike some of the former people that walked up here, I'm not an employee of Masasushi. I am, however, a resident of Hunter's Lane, of the Hunter's Creek subdivision on Hunter's Lane, and I feel like this change will impact me and my family, and that's why I'm here to ask that you vote against it. You've heard many of the reasons before, and while I certainly respect the landowner's right to try to maximize his profit with that, that will benefit one family, one family only. The change that's being requested will impact the 53 families that live with inside the Hunter's Creek subdivision, and I think that's, you know, far greater impact than the maximization of profits of one business owner. And so, you know, I ask you to remember, why did you first sign up for city council? Keep Friendswood beautiful, and hopefully to keep Friendswood Friendswood. And we have a long-term plan on the city council where we want to maximize the tax dollars through the use of commercial spaces. Personally, I feel like if we change now for this subdivision, for this commercial space, we'll be asked time and time again, monthly meeting after monthly meeting, to change our zoning requirements for many of the subdivisions and the remaining properties that are here within Friendswood. So again, respectfully ask that you vote no on this issue. Thank you for your time, and again, for your service.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, the city secretary just pointed out that on our next public hearing, there are a couple names of, coincidentally, people that live on Hunter's Lane, so Mark.
Ren Yard.
Ren Yard, did you want to speak on this one?
Sorry, I put my name on the roll, it was the first time in the council meeting, so I apologize.
We got one of the sharpest city secretaries.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And so I'm going to go with you, Emily, and I think...
Well, I'll represent my wife.
Okay, Aaron Allen, are you also wanting to speak on this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, first time.
And Vanessa and Guy Cordell, so I'll just open it up to anybody that... Go ahead, sir.
So I, you know, I'm a new resident to Hunter's Creek, moved there, or bought the house in December 2020, similar to what other people have said knowingly, knowing what I was buying into and the potential for what might happen in that one acre tract of land. I have significant concerns, and after hearing Mr. Scott explain the whole gate issue and the traffic issue, which has become worse since, say, you changed the intersection from being able to go right and left, and now we can only go right. The impact of six to potentially nine units, because if you rezone this for medium density, it can actually go up to nine units, even though the plan is for six, he could change that at any time. I think there's a, an economic impact in addition to the impact to, more so than just property values, but my understanding, the HOA, our HOA owns the street, and we maintain that street. We pay, you know, we pay fees every year for the homeowners association assessments, et cetera, et cetera, and there is going to be an economic impact to every resident in there that our HOA dues are going to go up, because with the impact of six to nine families, they're going to have an effect on that area right there, and if you guys are familiar with it, it's a very nice entrance to a neighborhood. We pay to maintain that, we own that street. There's going to be no economic impact to the homeowner, the rental, the people who rent the townhomes, they're not going to pay part of that, but yet they'll use it, and they'll have effect on us and how it looks and what we have to pay. And the traffic with an extra, I mean, traffic is already somewhat bad when some of the other businesses have a lot of people there, they're parking in the street. I don't see how you can put six units in a .89 acre tract of land without it looking horrendous. The impact of garbage trucks, et cetera, just servicing that facility is going to have an impact on all of our residences. And like I said, the gate issue, if it opens up into that street, that's going to pose a significant problem to our residents getting in our neighborhood. And to echo some of the other comments about, everybody knew what they were buying when they bought in. So did the, so did the owner of that piece of land that wants to now change it. Like previously said, he's got every right to do that, but I would implore you guys to represent the best interests of 53 taxpayers as opposed to one. And I don't want to surmise why the previous meeting and the development or whoever approved this went and said yes, but I can certainly see the tax consequences of six townhomes bringing in a whole lot more tax revenue than one business or potentially two businesses. And it would be sad if it was an economic decision based on more tax dollars versus the representation of 53 homeowners who I would imagine, if we polled every single one of them, would vehemently oppose this. I don't think there would be any dissent. So thank you for your time, and I hope that you vote against this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Allen.
Good afternoon, evening. Thank you for your time. I'm not going to rehash everything that my neighbors have said, because it's all true. I just asked that you would deny this request. I'm new to Friendswood, but one of the things that really drew me to this city was like the small town feel of Friendswood. You know, driving through 518, y'all decorate the parks and everything, it's beautiful. But putting these townhomes in just really takes away from that small town feel, so I ask that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa and Guy Cordell.
Hey, I'm Guy. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council members, thank you all for being here. So my name is Guy Cordell, I live at 418 Hunter's Lane inside Hunter's Creek Estates. I just want to say that, you know, I own nine rental properties in the city of Houston, from commercial to residential properties, and I know the impact that those make. I know the type of tenants that those come in, I know the type of things that happen there. I strongly oppose this, I think that it's going to affect our property values, I think we have, you know, definitely lots of traffic issues already, I think that that's going to be affected. You know, there's lots of effects that you can do with this, and I think that you guys should oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, did I miss anybody that signed up? Good, okay. There being no one else desiring to speak, I now close these two public hearings and move on to item 8B to consider an ordinance amending the Friendswood Comprehensive Plans' Future Land Use Map to change the FLUM designation from retail to high-density residential, and amending the official zoning map to make a zone classification change from community shopping center district to a multifamily residential medium-density district for the property located at 110 Hunter's Lane, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. I have a motion.
I'll move. I'll make the motion.
Have a motion? I'll make the second. Comments, discussion? Sure there's comments. Go ahead.
You know, normally when we're up here and there's a situation where there's a piece of property and houses, we're going commercial away from something, but in this case, I've always been very sensitive to the fact that when somebody moves in a house, they have a responsibility to look at the property around them and see what's going to go in there. And so several people have said tonight, they thought that would be commercial, and I think, you know, changing it is a bit unfair, and then regardless of the reason, you know, it could be perfectly nice apartments going in there, but the second thing is, we go to a lot of trouble to make commercial property, because we're trying to not have as much property tax, and here we have a piece of commercial property, and we're going to go back the other way. And I think, you know, you're going to lose out on possible sales tax and other things there that would be a benefit over just having a building with people living in it. And the third thing is, I'm a little leery of rezoning something where we haven't seen a plat map or any kind of design that's going to go on there, so I have concerns about rezoning this.
Chris?
Robert.
Robert?
Yes, I was listening to some of the concerns that we have out there. I'm looking at Hunter's Lane with the lots up here, and it says it's a private road. Aubrey, by, or Becky, by what right does this property owner have to a private road that's exclusive? I would assume if it's private, it's exclusive to Hunter's Creek?
Yeah, only the portion past the gate is private, if you look at them...
See, I can't see the gate.
So it's where the yellow is on the, that's the snippet from the future land use map.
So that part of Hunter's Creek that's in between the red is not private?
So the roadway was installed as part of the Hunter's Creek Estates subdivision, all platted as one. Behind the gate, it's private, but the homeowners association has an obligation to maintain the landscaping within the boulevard. It was developed as part of a master plan concept.
On the exhibit where it shows the lots, subject property and the road, it shows Hunter's Lane is private all the way to South Friendswood Drive. I'm not looking at that plat, I'm looking at the...
If you look at the labeling on Hunter's Lane in front of the commercial properties that listed as private, and that's a misnomer, but the plat for the property included the commercial properties as well, hence why they have access to the detention pond when the developers...
Morad, are you telling me that this property has access to that road?
Yes, sir.
And would they be responsible in any way, shape, and form to maintain that road?
I will defer to the plat that was recorded when the subdivision was created for Hunter's Creek Estates. I believe that they have an obligation from the gate back, from the gate forward, the city of Friendswood is responsible for the concrete, the homeowners association is responsible for the landscaping within the medians.
Thank you, Mo.
Yes, sir.
They spoke to in regards to the drainage, and I'm completely aware of the drainage behind the Home Bank and the Starbucks. My brother-in-law owns the Home Bank building, and it's always holding water back there, and also the property by the Jack in the Box, that's private drainage, and the cups and everything gets thrown down in there, and it piles up, and you can't drive through the Jack in the Box driveway. So is this development required to do off-site detention?
Their detention was accounted for in the Hunter's Creek detention pond that's located...
They're getting credit for this lot in Hunter's Creek's own detention, and does this person have to maintain that detention pond?
That would be a civil matter between the commercial properties and the HOA.
Why didn't the homeowner give us a rendition of the townhomes that he was talking about putting in? Are these apartments? Are they townhomes? Are they connected as apartments?
They are townhomes. It's a straight rezoning, so a site plan's not required.
And you chose multifamily residential medium-density versus low-density, even though low-density would have covered the six units, the medium-density goes up to nine?
Yes, just because it was the .89 acres at the time, like I said, it's just a straight rezoning request, so we weren't sure, they were still working on the site plan at the time that they made the request, and they weren't sure how many units they could fit on there.
Okay, that's my question. Okay. Me, I feel, you know, for the owner, I, you know, if you buy a piece of property, and we have, my colleagues up here have said this many times, if you buy a piece of property, you ought to have a right to do what you want to do with that piece of property. And yes, this does require a zone change, I understand. Changes from what it has been for a number of years, commercial to back to residential, but, you know, in my mind, I think that fits better there than an Arby's or something that you guys, you residents would not have any claim, we wouldn't have... We wouldn't have a hearing if it stays commercial and Arby's buys it, he sells it to Arby's, they put in Arby's. You have no place to complain because it is fitting the zoning that you say you recognize and are expecting it to. So, in my mind, if I was living there, I would love to have this, these townhomes there as a buffer to the other businesses out there. I would say, hey, this protects me from dumpster or the smell of a grease trap from Arby's, you know, right over the walls. And like I said, I respect your right, sir, to do what you want with that piece of property. Regardless, it does require a zone change, it has to come before us now. I wrote some of those same things down, Robert Drainage and the street ownership, I understand those. Somebody mentioned that it was changed, that you can only turn right out of that subdivision now. And that is because a couple of years ago, when another zone change came before us, multiple residents came up and explained to us that that was the most dangerous intersection in town. Coming out of there, trying to make a left turn, and I had residents that came to me that don't live in your neighborhood that had been injured in car wrecks there. And that's so, we went to Tech Dot, we discussed it with Tech Dot. We said, hey, we have some data from residents telling us this most, and they agreed, and so they changed it. And now it is right turn only. So, I don't think you have a right to come back and complain to us that, hey, it's right turn only, when you're the ones that pointed out the fact that this is the most dangerous intersection in town. We corrected that. We did what you asked us to do, I think, there. Trish?
Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Oh, okay.
I'm taking a break.
Okay.
Take a rest.
So, I didn't want to remain silent out of respect for all of you that came to talk tonight, but I am confused. My first year on council, I'm going to be very honest, I'm not going to be a politician, I'm just going to talk to you as a fellow resident. When my first year on city council, Hunter's Creek came because the landowner that had land abutting to the back part of the subdivision, but to the front part of 528, wanted to zone that, rezone that from residential to commercial, and it would be next to the commercial that's already there, and the accessway would be out on 528. And Hunter's Creek residents came out very opposed to that for many of the same reasons that they didn't want commercial property next to their homes that close, even though if my memory serves me, the buffer was actually wider. I voted that night along with the, although it made perfect sense to me, to put commercial property on 528. I voted to table that in order for the landowner and the subdivision, the residents, to get together, and I understood it couldn't be worked out, although there was an emergency access gate since there wasn't any for that developed or planned for when that subdivision was first developed. And so, there was talk of that. And so, now I sat through the PNC hearing too and listened to many of the same concerns, but it's just the opposite now. And I am confused because honestly, I went back and I drove that area, and I sat there in the back of that parking lot, and I looked at that little piece of land, and I looked at those beautiful homes right on the other side of the fence, and I tried to put myself in one of those homes in that subdivision and thought, I would much rather have six to eight units of a high-end townhome right there for less traffic, for better safety and security, for all of those things than to have like an Arby's, a nail salon, a donut shop, a massage parlor, whatever it might be, a two-story retail right there. My brothers would be nothing get developed right there. I mean, that's what I'd bet everybody in Hunter's Creek would want too, is that there would remain that buffer right there because it is congested. And when, I guess when that future land map use was developed, I wasn't on council then, but I imagine that nobody really pictured the congestion that now exists in that area. And there's a lot of congestion, and I'm in Morad's ear all the time as well as other people to try to work with Tech Dot to get some solutions. So, it was really confusing to me because I feel like I'm hearing the same arguments for different now, when in my heart, I'm thinking really and truly, they don't want anything right there next to their homes, which I get, I really get. But that's not an option we get to vote on. So, you know, I'm really in a quandary because on all honesty, when I look at it objectively, I say, all of those concerns, now, the presence of the gate, the location of the gate, the drainage, all those things will be worked out later, not at this point. But when I look at it objectively, I think all of your concerns are really better met having residential. And the assumption that we would have transients or people that we don't want, I'm not sure those are correct assumptions, and that bothers me a little bit too, to be honest. So, a question was asked, if I was living there, which would I rather? And I'd say, I'd rather to have other residences than to have a commercial property or a restaurant that I couldn't control. So, that's where I'm at, and you deserve to hear that from me.
John Scott?
Well, so I commend the residents that took the time to determine what type of zoning you were surrounded by. I've argued up here years past, the stuff that went in at Leisure Lane, everything else, that people have a right to know what can and cannot go up around their properties. And that, and make an informed decision whenever they purchase their home. And I think in this instance, we've heard from the residents that did do that homework. Now, I agree that sometimes it gets confusing because they don't want this to go in, or they don't want that to go in, and sometimes there's a conflict. But there can be no conflict when a citizen of the community, of a neighborhood, looks at the surroundings and says, I want to buy my house here because I know the impact of the properties around me. And they make that decision. And so, it's not our responsibility up here to, you know, want one thing over another because if we lived there, we thought it would be better. That's not what we should do. What we have to do is we have to protect the citizens that live in our community. We have to protect them in the homes and the properties that they purchase. And while in the past, obviously, there are those that are ignorant or naive to determine that, what they're surrounded by, for the majority of those that do take the time to figure that out, it's our responsibility to not pull the rug out from underneath their feet. That's our responsibility, not to go chasing commercial dollars. We're going to go rezone something so that we can get more revenue, not if it negatively impacts our citizens, who we're all here to serve. So, if you bought your property there knowing what is zoned there, I agree with comments that were made. If an Arby's goes in there or any other commercial building goes in there, you won't get to vote on it. You won't get to voice your displeasure with any legal standing. It's own commercial shopping center. Some of you claim that you knew that when you bought your home, and that did not impact your decision. So, if a commercial developer comes along and wants to put commercial property there, I hope it's not the same people complaining that a commercial shopping center is now going in next to my neighborhood. Because my argument then will be the same as it is now. You should have known what it was zoned when you bought your property. So, for that reason, I think it's the responsibility of this governing body to protect the citizens who purchased homes, knowing what the ramifications were of the zoning that surrounded them, and not change it years and years and decades after it's already been zoned. That's why I will not support changing the zoning.
Hey, hey, hey. Mayor Pro Tem, Aaron Work.
So, I'm very familiar with this area, and according to what John Scott said, I bought over there knowing HEB was behind me. I was fine with it. All of you obviously knew there was commercial behind you. You were fine with it. If something goes in, it is what it is. When I tried to sell my house over there, every realtor came back with feedback that people didn't like the, the neighborhood was great, but it was too hard to get in and out of it. I moved out in 2016. I believe that doing something like this, we're trying to put 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag in that area. You can't put anything else in that area. It's building up traffic, it's the most dangerous intersection. I think some kind of commercial can go in there, but it's got to be the right commercial, some kind of an office building. I'm sure y'all be fine with that. I wish that y'all could have worked this out before getting here. I think that maybe that's a step, like what Trish spoke, we did on, but that's not for, you know, today. But I will not support this strictly because I didn't hear one resident support that that lives in y'all's neighborhood. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think one resident supported it that's here. And for that, I'm going to be a no.
I'll just be finished by saying a couple of things. I want to commend Planning and Zoning, who again, did tireless work on this. Aubrey, Becky, you included, staff members that support Planning and Zoning, thank you so much for all the work you did, going through in minute detail, I know you did, on what this would end up being and presenting this to us. I just want to finish by saying, hey, a couple of people have said it. Pastor Bobby Kirkpatrick said it when he came up to the podium to invocate that, hey, we ask for people to make decisions based on what they think is the best thing for the city. And that's what we're up here to do. I recognize there are 53 residents that live in that community, but there are 42,000 residents that live in this community, and we have to represent them all and do what we think is in the best interest of all the residents of this city. Now, granted, they're not going to be driving past an Arby's or a townhome, but we have to think about what is the best thing for the city. So, I'm going to call for the vote here. We're going to get this over with, and I'm just saying that all of us are voting with what we think is the best thing to go in there for the city. So, with that being said, unless there are any more comments, all in favor? Opposed? Motion fails, four to three. Item 9A proposes zone classification change request for a specific use permit for next use 8131 religious organizations. I now call to order this... I now call to order this public hearing regarding a special use permit to allow for next use 8131 religious organizations. The underlying single-family residential dwelling district, SFR, will remain on property located at 1376 West Parkwood Avenue, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Now, like to request the staff to summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Yes, sir. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on Thursday, December 8th. This is a request for High Point Church to move into, there's an existing house located on this property. I think everybody's pretty familiar with it across from the Public Safety Building. There's been a lot of cars in that driveway, trash and things like that. But High Point Church has made plans to purchase the property. They're going to move their administrative offices into this, the existing house for now. They are going to extend or expand the parking somewhat, put in a sidewalk and some landscaping. In the long term, they have purchased the adjacent 12 point something acres, and their plan, long-term plan is to build their church at the rear of that property and to leave us some commercial frontage along the roadway in conformance with our future land use map. So, their request at this point is the SUP to allow the admin offices in that house. And the commission voted seven to zero on this request at their meeting.
Thanks, Aubrey.
Yes.
Thank you, Aubrey.
You're welcome.
Does the applicant, yeah, I know, I have to stop mumbling. Does the applicant have any comments they'd like to provide at this time? Oh, you do?
My name's Scott Niemeyer. I'm the pastor of High Point Church, and just keep this real, real short. Just want to say thank you guys for all that you do for the city and the community. You know, we started the church here five years ago, Bells and Westwood, and are now at the junior high. And we came to Friendswood and because we wanted a great community, and we wanted to raise our kids someplace, we wanted to make the community better, we wanted to give back. And that's really what High Point Church is all about. You know, we definitely have, you know, aspirations of building a building on the next, the adjacent piece of property there, but really want you guys to know that one of our core values is excellence, and we believe in excellence without extravagance. But I call it the garage sale house right now, and I can assure you that it will look a whole lot better whenever we get done with it. With that being said, thank you all for your consideration and really appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir. All right, I have a sheet here. Carl Bayer?
I signed in the sheet just for the meeting, not for the council.
Says public hearing regarding a specific use permit to allow. Okay. How about Shannon?
I did the same thing.
You were just following Carl there? How about Jeff Wilson?
I was following him.
All right. Hey, it makes my job easier, that's fine. There being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing and move on to item 9B. Consider an ordinance regarding a specific use permit to allow for next use 8131 religious organizations. The underlying single-family residential dwelling district, SFR, will remain for the property located at 1376 West Parkwood Avenue, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Do I have a motion on this?
Second.
Scott and Graffon, any discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
Sorry. I have a couple of questions. Does, if we approve this and they get the five acres with the house, does that go off the tax rolls then?
They can submit for a tax exemption with the appraisal district, and it'll be up to the appraisal district to make that determination, but there will be a caveat that they would have to start working on their church within three years.
Within thirty?
Three years.
Three years?
Three years.
Okay. And so, then when they start building the church, the rest of the property would go untaxed then, right?
Correct. Now, they have indicated to us their ultimate plan is to develop the church in the back of the property and leave the front as commercial acreage.
They're going to leave some commercial there, yeah. And currently, you cannot have a religious purpose on that land, is that correct?
Correct. All religious uses require a specific use permit.
And so, and we ran into this with the Whitcomb property, if something is not allowed to have a religious purpose, and we don't change the zoning, okay? So, it stays that way, you can't do something religious. Are we up against that Arlopa law, the federal law?
Potentially, we could be.
Even though we haven't actually done something to interfere with anybody's ability to practice their religion by just not doing anything, right? We still would have an issue with that?
I would need to take a look at that further and see.
Oh, that brings up a question.
I haven't researched that.
Councilmember Hanks?
So, that, he made me think of this question. So, forgive me, I'm going to show my ignorance here. So, do we designate specific use permits on the land use map, or aren't those applied for individually?
So, they're applied for individually, and is there, granted, they're reflected on our zoning map?
After they're applied.
After they're applied for and approved by this body.
Right, but we don't designate land for...
For churches.
Before someone applies.
Correct.
So, there wouldn't be like, okay, you can build your churches over here because we're making this SUPs. That's not the way it is. You apply for it, and then we make it an SUP, right?
Correct. The only exceptions would be in the case of High Point Church operating out of the old junior high. Right now, those facilities were predominantly another use, and they're utilizing them on a temporary basis.
Something like this.
Something like this. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Discussion? All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Work session topic, item 10A, receive and discuss an update regarding the Exxon Heinz development to be located on approximately 159 acres along Wilderness Trail and extending towards the Falling Leaf Baker Road area.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. You heard from me earlier this evening that this workshop item is to discuss the property that... You heard from me earlier this evening that this workshop item is to discuss the property that, uh, is the old Exxon property. 159 acres between Wilderness Trails and the Creekwood Estates subdivision. Uh, the reason it's before you this evening as a workshop item is much like the Whitcomb property that was mentioned a few minutes ago. It's a unique piece of property that has a lot of infrastructure needs, uh, needs that can help benefit the city of Friendswood long-term. You heard with the Hunter's Creek Estates item that FM 528 and 518 being the most dangerous intersection or the most heavily congested intersection in Friendswood, well, the only alternative is to have alternative routes through town. Northwest, east-west corridor routes. Uh, the Heinz group is currently under contract for this piece of property and their representatives are here this evening to walk you through their proposed development as well as the financing mechanism to get some of this critical infrastructure constructed here in Friendswood. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carson.
Am I able to put the slides up?
Yes, they're already in the slide deck.
Cool, so I just click.
I'll tell you, this group looks favorably on projects that don't present for a real long time.
Okay, I'll go. I got a lot of slides, but I'm going to fly through them then.
Well, yeah. Brief and to the point is, uh, and if you got more than 72, then John Scott's going to have a problem.
Yeah, okay, I'll go as fast as I can. So I won't do too much of an intro to Heinz. You know, we're, we're located here in Houston. We've built most of downtown, the gallery, all that. So, uh, this is some high-level numbers. We started in 1957, managed 90 billion assets, um, all that, 28 countries, all that good stuff. Here just shows, you know, some of our photos from our residential communities. I manage our residential team here in Houston, um, building projects across Texas. So this one on the bottom is one in Katy, for example. So, you know, I'll fly through these, just some pretty photos. This shows where we do projects. So first viewer Houston, this is a nice townhome deal we did in the Heights area, uh, one we did in Katy here. So you can just quickly see, this is actually a, an interesting one because it's in Tomball. It's about the same size. It's a PID development instead of a MUD development. Um, so just a bunch more of these pretty photos. I'll get to the actual project here in a second, so. Here we go. So this is just an overall land plan of, you know, the black outline is the track that we do have under contract. Um, key points here I want to point out, we have it allotted out there. Um, you can see SF1 shows 187 lots. Those are all planned to be 90-foot lots, um, which would comply with your current ordinances. Um, you can see we've got a couple of different detention ponds on there. The site, um, actually has a break through the middle, so we would drain two separate ways. But we want to at least show you the amount of lots we, we plan and the size of the lots we plan. We, we are...
Could you stop there for just, I was trying to pull this lotting up too, and I'm sorry to interrupt. But could you give me an idea of how many, um, lots are out there that you cannot develop because of, uh, the possible Exxon abandoned well situation?
All these lots that are shown are what we can develop.
Or can, so you have some open areas in there?
Yeah.
That could possibly indicate that there's wells there?
Right, and there's, and a lot of that's detention too.
Okay, okay.
So we would be building onsite detention.
All right, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, so. So that's the, the land plan. This next slide is really, uh, kind of our off-site exhibit. It shows you how we plan to develop it and what the off-site infrastructure needs are, uh, that, uh, the city manager mentioned. Really, the green, the green lines show where the site would drain. Um, there's two, two creeks to the north and south. We would need to build some, um, off-site outfalls to get to those creeks. We would have the onsite detention as well, as I mentioned. Uh, we have a proposed water line in there that runs, you know, about a mile off-site to a 12-inch water line connection point. And then the wastewater plant, and I, I should have said this with a caveat at the beginning. This is all still being discussed with staff. This is all pretty fresh. So this is, um, this isn't what we are going to do. This is kind of the best, uh, plan we have in mind as of today, but we're still, there's a lot of things to figure out. It's a challenging, uh, site. And then probably the most important thing that, uh, is the existing, you can see the existing collectors on there are in yellow. Um, our, our proposed collector is also yellow dots. And then the, the major thoroughfare, um, is the red dotted line. It runs up from Friendswood Parkway through an existing right-of-way. Does this have the laser? Oh, look at that. So it starts here, this red dotted line comes up, there's existing right-of-way here. And really what we tried to do here was bring this through an already existing right-of-way. And then when you get to this portion, bend it through our site and provide a buffer to these homes up here with detention and green space. Uh, there really wasn't, we talked a lot about different routes. We used to have a map with 20 different lines going through it. Um, but with this existing right-of-way there, we felt like this was the best site. But again, this, you know, we put this here, this red dotted line, I don't know where this road would end up going, but it, it would serve as a, a pretty, uh, hopefully a connection point all the way through one day. And then this is just our cost estimate. Really not much to say here. This is probably a $33 million project. Um, and these costs are just, just the infrastructure, uh, that we just showed you on the map. This doesn't include the land cost, the legal fees, all that. So it's a pretty expensive project, actually. Um, and, and we're spending $33 million to get 187 lots out of it. Um, it's a challenging site, a lot of wells, um, to work around. So it's, it's not very efficient and it's a pretty tight pro forma as is, but right now we think we have it in a place that can work, so. So, oops, sorry.
That's all, um, 90-foot lots, 187 90-foot lots?
Right, all the same size.
And you'd be responsible for, I think, probably two-lane, uh, coming off of 528 to get back there?
No, sir. Uh, so the, the limits to their project would be the, the boundaries in black. So they would be responsible to four-lane Boulevard through their property.
Through their property.
From, from Wilderness Trails to, uh, nearly, uh, past a Falling Leaf.
So is there, yeah, is there access before the rest of the Boulevard gets out to 528? Is there access to this?
That would, that would have to be built at a future date. So what this project would do is build the four-lane Boulevard through their 159 acres. And then a future grant application through HDAC would seek to do the funding for the project from 528 to, uh, Wilderness Trails. And then also from, at the end of their project to Pearland Parkway.
Well, what I'm asking is how do you get to these homes if we're still waiting on HDAC funding to do the?
Through the existing roadways, Wilderness Trails, through Castlewood.
That was my question, is there other access?
Falling Leaf, there's three connection points.
You get in here, you get in through Falling Leaf, pass the high school there.
Gotcha.
Sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, Wilderness Trails.
It's obvious now when you point it out, it's, it's, we can't see it on our screens, well, you got the screen.
Well, there's an agenda item later on tonight to upgrade our facilities that might help with the audiovisual stuff.
So have you done, have you?
Where the, where the Boulevard is curving, that's, uh, at that Baker Road and the curvature where Falling Leaf is, that, that is an existing detention pond already, isn't it? Within, no.
Just beyond it, so there's a private, there's 2351, you're thinking the, uh, Baker Road detention pond.
So I'm not far enough yet.
It's just beyond the track. So if you look at the panhandle where Carson's using his laser pointer, the top of the panhandle is the Baker Road detention pond.
Okay, that's detention too, so, okay, all right.
Detention pond at, um, beyond Castlewood, from Castlewood and Falling Leaf too, it's owned by the neighborhood.
Right.
Marad, what'd you say about, explain about Castlewood coming through there? Doesn't have a barricade at the end of it now, will it go into this neighborhood or?
So it currently has a barricade on it because the roadway was intended to connect to a future road network at some point in the future. When the subdivision was built, if it were to be a dead-end street in perpetuity, there'd be a cul-de-sac at that.
Marad, did we abandon the detention pond at Falling Leaf and make it private? Did we do, what, what did we do here in the last three or four, five months? We abandoned something at Falling Leaf?
So it was a drainage easement that ran through 10 Falling Leaf, I believe was the address. But the homeowner that purchased the property wanted to build a house across the easement.
I got you, I knew there was something though, babe.
So yes, there, there's four access points, two off Wilderness Trails, one at East Castlewood, and the other being the extension of Falling Leaf would tie into this roadway.
Okay.
So have you done any traffic studies on what's going to happen with Falling Leaf and, and those roads when you put 157 houses in there?
We haven't yet, but we do that as part of, as part of our due diligence.
I will note that the, the question before this committee or this council this evening isn't the, whether or not the use is appropriate out here. If the subdivision, if the developer wasn't looking to work with the city for these infrastructure improvements, they can go build this tomorrow and have the, these tie-ins to Falling Leaf to Castlewood to Wilderness Trails. And there's no legal standing, the city has to deny those access points.
Ma'am, you're going to have to get recognized by the mayor to speak.
So, um, the reason we asked them to come before this council as a workshop was to discuss the critical infrastructure needs the city has. We have a desperate need to have another north-southeast west corridor that connects ultimately Lake City Parkway with Pearland Parkway.
Completely agree with you.
Otherwise, we will continue to have congestion issues on 518.
Exactly.
And this allows the city of Friendswood to get a large chunk of the roadway built now, which would help our benefit cost analysis for future, uh, grant applications from the...
In lieu of a possible TERS and a PID?
Correct. So this council and the city historically has been in opposition to management districts and municipal utility districts. The use of a TERS and a public improvement district will allow this infrastructure to be developed and paid for without establishing an additional tax on the homeowners, future homeowners out there.
And for the benefit of the public, could you, uh, state the limitations of a PID? I know a MUD could eventually go on forever. I think that's what I'm alluding to, Mo.
So a MUD or a management district can establish a tax rate, tax rate, much like the city of Friendswood has on the properties within, within our jurisdiction. A public improvement district would establish, uh, an assessment, a one-time assessment that can either be paid annually or paid upfront in totality. Regardless of what happens to the value of the property, that assessment is static and it allows to, bonds to be issued to pay for the, the project cost, infrastructure cost.
And, and then it goes away?
It goes away. And the homeowner, when they buy their house, can pay it upfront and they don't have to ever pay it again. And again, that only applies to the homes that are built within the subdivision. It does not allow, doesn't apply to any other properties within the city of Friendswood. Sorry.
Well, I just have a lot of questions, I guess, and thoughts. So I'm a little bit familiar with this property. Um, I looked at it one time for a high school site. There's a lot of abandoned wells and maybe some abandoned pipelines. I don't know if there's active ones out there still or not, I'm not sure. So when you gave that estimate of 33 million, is that what you said? 33 million for infrastructure alone, that's not the cost of the property. It's not the, um, some of the other things that you may run into. Or is it? Is that 33 million taking into account what you may find and have to mitigate to do that or?
No, that does not. That's just major infrastructure. There's other costs on top of that too, so.
So what kind of timeline then? So you're looking at this and asking for us to kind of judge what we'd be willing to do. But when would you know, what kind of timeline are you looking at to say this is viable? Or this is going to be too expensive or, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, we have, we're under contract and we've continued to work. Exxon's been great to work with on this one. They've, you know, one of the things we did right away was to go locate every single well. And the way we did that was we flew a drone and that could pinpoint the, the metal under the ground and give you a decent idea of where it was. And then we went out there with a walk, a walking magnet, kind of found them. And so we took that info and then went and did that land plan that we showed you, um, which, you know, doesn't have the wellheads on there. But, you know, anywhere there was one, we avoided it with a lot, uh, the best we can. So we've already spent, uh, probably 75% of that money.
Doing some research.
And, and it is Exxon, they know what they're doing with these things. You know, we're assuming most of these wells are, the capped wells are capped well, but we will, when we get out there and look at it, we figure that out later.
So how much of this does Exxon still own?
Exxon, this is actually two different parcels side by side. Um, this 39-acre piece here is not Exxon-owned. This hundred, I think it's like 117 maybe, is Exxon, so.
So I did, I did note too, you said the road really hasn't been decided. It's going to be a major thing in the community for people that live there. So it has been for 40 years. So, uh, even though it was on that proposed, uh, thoroughfare plan for decades, almost half a century, it still is a hot button issue. So, um, that will be something that, I mean, you would cross at a later date, but.
Yeah.
So separate from this endeavor, if Heinz were to go away, the Houston-Galveston Area Council did award us a planning study to determine the alignment of the roadway. And they're awaiting an advanced funding agreement with the, the Texas Department of Transportation to get that effort started. Uh, but eventually the alignment's going to be determined and they're going to be utilizing the most advantageous corridor and connection points to make a rally.
And I do agree with the need for that, and I do think it can be a very pretty aesthetically pleasing road as well as, you know, something that's needed, so.
That's definitely needed. I, we've been waiting for the developer to come in here and partner with us on this to get this part of the road done. And we all know we need a, Friendswood Parkway needs to get, or John Scott Parkway, whatever, needs to get up through there to, to Pearland and eventually, so.
Can I ask you what size houses in, in, in today's dollars of approximate cost, the houses you're going to build?
Yeah, so we don't, we don't actually build houses, I should have clarified that. We're a lot developer, so we'll go and sell a finished lot to a home builder. Um, these lots would be anywhere, uh, you know, if I had to guess today, we haven't talked to builders about it, but 175,000 and maybe 200. So you're looking at, you know, flirting with a million-dollar homes on a 90-foot lot.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
So I gather from council's direction that you would like to work towards the creation of a public improvement district and a TERS to get this project completed.
Explore that, go forward with that. Thanks, Carson.
Yeah, thank you. Is it short enough?
Not really, but it's your fault. Marad, just one other, one, one, one last question. That's backing up to the Creekside subdivision, right?
Yes, sir.
Would they have access to the thoroughfare?
So they would all have access to the, to the thoroughfare through Wilderness Trails or through Falling Leaf? Any existing public roadways, they would have access to the thoroughfare.
Okay, that's my last question, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sir, appreciate it. Item 11, city manager's report.
I understand brevity is key, uh, and I apologize in advance. So this past December, we had our annual Christmas dinner, at which we recognized employees in five-year increments for their service to our community. I will read through these names really quickly. Uh, but in the five-year category, we had Matthew Schmidt in our police department, Blaze Brazil, and Blake Brazil in our police department, Juan Moreno in PD, Raul Ramos in Public Works, Gabriela Salas in PD, David Slavarp in the Fire Marshal's Office, Emily Pelter in Administrative Services, and Joshua Reagan in Public Parks and Recreation. In the 10-year category, we had Lieutenant James Price in PD, Nell Mathis in ASO, Susan Ballard in the City Attorney's Office, Katie Harris in the City Manager's Office, Steve Vabrec in Public Works, Heather Van Dyne in Engineering, Samuel Randeros in Public Works, Kevin Cahill in PD, and Jeff Kimberly in PD as well. For 15 years, we had Aaron Litko in PD, Katina Hampton, which I forgot that evening, and I will regret to the, the day I die.
Wait, your budget?
Yes. No, they, they seem to be missing. Uh, but Katina Hampton, and she was part of my hiring class, so I should have known better, uh, in ASO. Nicholas McCandless in PD, Michael Boyett in Parks and Rec, Mitchell Jeffcoat in PD, Aubrey Harbin in Community Development Department, Nikki Bender in Fire Marshal's Office, Veronica Lamb in Library. I've already mentioned, uh, Jennifer Walker in Administrative Services, and Karen Hart, Library, Glenda Faulkner in my office. Uh, I was also in that hiring year in 2007. For 20 years, we had Norman Stewart in HR, Mary Jones in PD, Dennis Center in PD, Edmundo De La Cerdah in PD, um, Clifton Duncan in Library, Justin Wagner in PD, Kim Ramirez in Parks and Rec, Roger Stenstrom in PD, and Tom Ferguson in CDD. And for 25 years, we had Lisa Price, the real police chief of the city of Friendswood.
Whoa.
We all know that. No, uh, it was a fun evening, thank you, council, that we're able to attend that evening and recognize our staff. Also coming up in January, we have our annual tree giveaway, which has been renamed the Friendswood Arbor Day. It'll be Sun, Saturday, January 21st at 8:00 a.m. at Centennial Park. There will be 100 large, seven-gallon trees available while supplies last. I doubt it will make it more than 30 minutes. Lastly, or two last items, and I'll be real brief. Friendswood was recently recognized as one of the top five neighborhoods in the city of, uh, the Houston metro area. Uh, they didn't rank these five cities, but they said each of these cities deserved, uh, recognition for their outstanding quality of life that they provide the residents of their community. And the last thing I had wasn't on the agenda, but, uh, just briefly wanted to mention a couple of months ago, y'all approved a, a contract with Grant Works to identify a use of our method of distribution dollars that we got from Hurricane Harvey. Uh, our application was signed by me last week, and we are the only one in the area to have an application completed before the deadline. So everyone else had to ask for an extension. So well done to our engineering staff for making that happen, so thank you, Samantha and your team.
Hopefully that'll get us more points when they score it.
I am hopeful, yes.
On time.
Yes, good, good, good. All right, moving on to item 12. Uh, for this first item, Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Wirtz is going to take over the meeting. I have a conflict of interest related to item 12A. I have filed the appropriate conflict of interest paperwork with the city secretary prior to this meeting. Come and get me, don't just leave me hanging back there. Dang.
Call for the break? Consider, uh, item 12A, consider accepting the official newspaper bid 2022-14 of Woodland Publishing Incorporated, Doing Business as the Reporter News, and approving a resolution designating such newspaper as the official newspaper of the city of Friendswood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions?
Third.
All in favor? Motion passes 6-0.
Hey, can we get through some other items real quick?
That was quick.
He may be a better reader.
Maybe.
He's out.
We need a closer bathroom, I tell you. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Item 12B. Consider approving an architectural design and services agreement with McLamore Long Architects for Design and Engineering Services for conceptual design of the city council chamber remodel project RFQ 2022-16, which will be funded through restricted PEG public educational and governmental fee reserves.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that? PEG, as we know, we, we collect PEG funds from people's.
Cable bills.
Cable bills. We can't spend them on anything unless it helps us get the information out, basically, in a nutshell, to the public. So we can only spend it on things that help with the AV quality in here and improve our computers. My computer's black right now, just to let you know, Marad.
We only have a certain number of computers that can work up there, so the others have to be sacrificed.
This is just a static display screen right here. Okay. Any other discussion, any items? Okay, I have a motion is second. All in favor. Seven, nothing. 12C. I'm going to take the lead on this item, make a motion to authorize a contract with Friendswood Historical Society in the amount of $17,500 for the maintenance and preservation of historical sites in the city. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have to have a second, and then I'll explain myself. I have a second. Since we have a motion is second, I, as the maker of the motion, I'll start the discussion and I'll explain to you why I am asking for an increase from 15,000 that we normally give, which was in the original agenda. I'm trying to avoid a, an amended motion here. Are you really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, so 15,000, 17,500. Now, I sat down with Letty. We, we kind of went through our mayor and council budget. We looked at our training and reimbursement line item. We carved out $2,500 from that line item to put towards this.
Which line item?
Council, travel, and reimbursement. So you might not be.
You're cutting into our $0 budget.
It's just what you promised.
It's just, it's.
I'll donate mine back.
Yeah, there you go. See, there's money right there we're making. So we're trying to increase the, the money that we give to the historical society because of their increased costs for insurance, et cetera. And like I said, it came from travel expenses, reimbursement line item. So over to you. You want to make a comment? You're good? Anybody else? Anything? I have a motion is second. All in favor? How about that? I've been doing this like almost five years now.
Is that it?
I've been on council with you for half my life. But, all right. Item 12D. Consider authorizing a master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Company, DBA, Omnia Partners, Public Sector, and Communities Program Management, LLC, DBA U.S. Communities.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Marad, could you fill us in on a few details on this? This is a little.
Yes, sir. Both this item and the very next item are interrelated. So, you know, we're currently undergoing renovations to our public safety building for this expansion. We have some necessary, unique requirements with our evidence room and allowing for better storage and integrity of the facility. We have solutions that we worked out with a vendor on the subsequent item. It's a member of this co-op that we can utilize their services on. Funding for this, this project will be funded through our police investigative fund, so this won't be a tax rate, or it won't be funded with tax revenue, nor will it be funded with the project bond proceeds.
Hey, I have a motion is second. All in favor? Okay. Item 12E. Consider approving a contract with Southwest Solutions Group for an evidence storage solution for the evidence room at the public safety building through Omnia Partners.
Second.
John Scott and Trish Hanks. Any discussion on this one? All in favor? Prove. 12F. Consider awarding the 2020 Lift Station Mitigation Package II/ Harvey Lift Station Repairs and Mitigation Project to McDonnell Municipal and Industrial Division of CF McDonnell Electric, Inc.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have any questions for these fine people right here that are obviously ready? All in favor?
Really like, really like that engineering group. I think the guy's focus for Texas Tech Red Raider.
The next item.
Guns up. Yes. Make a, make a note in the minutes that a Texas Tech Red Raider made good tonight. We actually had a positive contribution from one. Yes. All right. Item 12G. Consider authorizing the Second Amendment to the standard form of agreement engineering with Garver LLC for engineering and technical services pertaining to the design bidding and construction of one, the Clear Creek Crossing Project, and two, the ground storage tank and pump improvements at Surface Water Plant Project One.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I'm not going to change this, but I think that's the Texas Tech Red Raider.
It is.
Okay, good. I'm voting for it.
No, I got a motion and a second. I heard it. All in favor? Good, good.
Yeah.
All right. Item 13. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Samantha. Appreciate you doing great work there. Consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 by approving Budget Amendment III, providing for supplemental appropriation and our transfer of certain funds.
Second.
John Scott and Sally Branson. All in favor? All in favor? Make a motion that we adjourn. Oh, wait a minute. Adjourn to executive session. Like I said, like I said, we now, okay, we don't adjourn. We now recess into and conduct an executive session pursuant to Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code to seek the advice of the city's attorney regarding cause number 0120-0398 CV, City of Friendswood versus Tostado, in the Court of Appeals for the First District of Texas, and Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the annual performance of the city attorney.
Yes. In her.
We now move on to Item 16A. Consider taking appropriate actions regarding the city attorney's annual performance evaluation. I need a motion on this item, Councilmember Branson.
I make a motion that we give the city attorney a 3.75% increase.
I second it.
Motion to second, all in favor? And, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.